Before I say the pledge, you should feel proud of the fact that the Pledge of Allegiance was written by a student who was studying at a place called the University of Rochester. Written in 1895 while he was studying to be a Baptist minister at the, at that time, University of Rochester Baptist School. He went on to publish that pledge in 1895 in a children's magazine for whom he was writing in New York City. And 1954, the Allied Commander, President of the United States, Eisenhower added the words, "Somebody help me."
One nation under God.
One nation under God. You were prepped. So, thank you. So, let's say that pledge and feel good about it.
I only know that because Michael told me five minutes ago.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the planning board meeting. Please be aware the fire exits, which are on the right, your left side of the room.
Mr. Chairman, can you pull down the mic because I kind of left it high? Yeah, thanks.
Do I start again? Nah. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of record and minutes, so please identify yourself each and every time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. They'll also ask you for an address. The board will follow the items in the order in which they appear in the agenda. Extra copies are available at the door. After the case has been called, your applicant and/or the representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give their address, and present their case. The planning board will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. In the case of a public hearing, it will be open to you folks for an input, at which time anyone wishing to speak will come to the podium, again, identify themselves, and give us the information, and direct any questions here to the board. Once all the public input is completed, the input by the public will be terminated and we'll complete our process and vote on, or work on each application. First application, Donna, please.
Did we want to mention that someone's going to be hurt, or should I just start?
Did it, right? Close enough, right?
Did we want to say that someone's going to be hurt? PB 1608-1, upon the matter of request by Fitzgerald Engineering and Holland Trada Project, acting as agent for Eagle Ridge Estates for preliminary and final site plan approvals to construct a 8,700 square foot, two-story apartment building, 20 units, and to convert a single-story building into a 6,000 square foot, two-story apartment building with 12 units, with parking and site-related improvements on premises 1,700 Hudson Avenue in an M Manufacturing District, and to develop additional parking area and site drainage for proposed apartments on premises 1,776 Hudson Avenue, Eagle Ridge Apartments in an R4 residential district.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board and esteemed staff members, my name is Ray Trada from the Holland Trada Project. We're the design manager that is overseeing the project for Eagle Ridge Estates. And underneath our management is also Fitzgerald Engineering Airpoint surveyors that are in our design package in our submission. This evening, we're presenting, actually, it was a great question right before the meeting of what's new, is basically, we came before the board a few months back on presenting a completely different plan for this project, and I wanted to walk the board through very briefly, not taking too much of your time, and how we got to where we are today. Right now, I'm... Actually, let's see if this works. You hear me? Okay. Right now, you're probably pretty familiar with the project of Eagle Ridge Circle, which is a private road. That was one of the questions that actually came up in the review. Fairly close to the East Ridge Road and Hudson Avenue, Eagle Ridge is right off of Hudson. And it's a, currently, it's 88 units that are basically four units per each building with, they're all single-story units that are in a circle, and the surrounding properties are also owned by the same ownership that owns this development. Hence, that's what we're going to be talking about tonight. One of the, one of the things I wanted to bring up is a little bit of history of when we presented before. It was a question that, what we presented, was it realistic? Well, the answer is yes and no. The reason why it was yes and no is, we thought it was a relatively conservative density increase with, with, I take a side note that we did have a few units that we were squeezing in the center, and I know that was not a desirable layout at all with many of the board members, so we scrapped that idea. So, once we scrapped that idea, we started looking at the other surrounding lots we were intending to develop, and what we found out is that basically the Eagle Ridge Circle itself is, it's in R4 district, which we knew, but R4 specifically states that you could only have, without a variance, you could only have one unit per parcel. Now, this whole, this whole R4 district is one parcel. So, all 88 of these units, which are comprising of, I want to say around, probably about 30 buildings, 20, 30 buildings, that they basically are grandfathered in. So, that was one of the things that even if we wanted to put more units in, we really couldn't. So, even though it was, we were trying to increase the density, it was, it was still on one parcel. So, then we started looking at different avenues, and one of the, one of which is this area right in here is basically a manufacturing area, and hence why we're here tonight. Let me just spin this around. Bear with me for one second. So, our current plan, and where we evolved to this, which I gave a very brief history, is that you currently have two industrial buildings in the manufacturing, this one and this one, and then there's a flag lot that's attached to the same parcel that is zoned as R4. So, it has two different zonings within the same parcel. So, that's, that's a little bit odd, but it was one of these things when it was, when it was zoned off originally. So, what we're intending on doing is, the only thing we wanted to do in this R4 is basically have parking for intended development. We're planning on converting the one industrial building and building a new apartment building. Now, the reason why there's two apartment buildings rather than the plan we had before, that a multi-tenant apartment building is allowable in a manufacturing zone if it is by a special use permit. So, hence tonight, what we're presenting is basically looking for a recommendation from the planning board to go to the town board for a special use permit, because a special use permit has to be approved by the town board. So, that's, that's, hence what we're looking for technically, but let me get into what we plan on doing. So, what we're looking at doing is basically a very, very minimal impact to the existing parcel as it is. We have these 88 units that are in the circle. We wanted to create, as I expressed before, a different alternative for, for units within the same development, and the current owners, the current partners, wanted to actually retire from their full-time jobs and actually manage this entire facility. This, just so you know, these properties, one of the owners, it's his grandmother's original property, it's been in the family for many, many, many years, and it was a farm that was developed, these units were developed on there. So, this is keeping in the community, these, these are both residents in the community, and, and they'd like to have their, their families actually thrive off of this, and they have to hit a certain critical mass to make that happen. So, what we looked at is the least amount of impacts to the overall site to also get, obtain their objectives. So, to give you an idea, I'm just going to flip back here for a second. Where we're looking at putting these units, which you're probably familiar with, is the plaza's right at the corner, then at the corner of East Ridge and Hudson, and then we have these, these manufacturing buildings right here, so there's a manufacturing build on Hudson, and then commercial buildings on Hudson as well. So, really, where we're talking about is right here, which is behind everything that you barely see from the road, and then we're talking about right here, which is behind buildings, and we're talking about parking that's on the R4 lot. So, all we're doing is, is basically looking for, rather than putting buildings on there to have the, the needed parking. Keep in mind that parking is, which is usually desirable by most jurisdictions, is the parking is actually behind the buildings, even though they front on Eagle Ridge Circle, which is a private road, from the main road, it's behind the building. So, so basically, you have the parking behind the buildings, the existing asphalt where you're not increasing at all. We are putting, we're putting buildings behind the plaza and behind the overall, the overall commercial area, so really what these, these are most, most likely going to be encountered at all is all from Eagle Ridge Circle. So, it's basically to expand the connection to Eagle Ridge Circle and the apartment complex that's already there. So, that being said, one of the questions was, is this the exact plan, and, and what kind of changes could happen? And it was a great question. And what, what I was saying is, I think the fear was, you know, if we present a plan, it's not really going to be that plan. That's not the case at all. What this is, is right, when we developed the, the overall buildings, this is the new building, by the way, the new building, we looked at access points, we looked at size by town code, we looked at a combination of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, and what made the most sense. The one flexibility that would happen, and I was expressing, is 20 units that we're proposing on the new building, it would be no more than that. What may become less is if we combine the ends. So, what I was getting at, I said there'd be 16 to 18 units. The reason why is, if you could see with the staircase, if you're coming up here, you could envision a hallway that would connect these two apartments, a hallway that would connect these two apartments, so on, so forth, on the second floor. What that does is it goes, it brings the 20 units down to 16 larger units. So, that's the one change that, that may possibly happen depending on the market. So, specifically, what I'm talking about is this, this 565 and 644 on the ends, on the second floor, they would be connected, on the first floor, we could connect. So, basically, if you envision the staircase, you would have a hallway where the staircase void is on this side, and you'd have a hallway on the bottom on this side. So, you could kind of see it in section in your mind on, on how that, that would happen. Other than that, the plan would be exactly the same. So, we, we looked at the window count, we looked at the access point. The access points are basically on either side of the longitudinal axis, and then, then basically on the short axis are the main entries. We have, one thing we have to do, really, it really depends on the, when you look at ADA, whether you have an elevator or not, it depends on diversity of units. So, if we have 50% on the first floor and 50% on the second floor, we don't need an elevator, or not required an elevator, but if we decide to split that up, there, I, I actually made this void for a staircase or an elevator. It could be either or. I, I made an accommodation for both. You'll also notice that I put the mechanical room in here that would obviously service the overall building mechanics, but it's also large enough to accommodate an elevator room. So, I wanted, the flexibility from a planning board side and from a town board side is, is just knowing we allocated space and it's going to stay, that space is going to stay, but the internal mechanics of whether, whether we have an elevator or not is, is really, really the determining factor in there. But if you notice how this is designed, there's four access points. From a fire safety standpoint, on the first floor, you, you have basically four points, access, 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 and then on the second floor, you have either, either end. So, it's, it's very, very well circulated. And obviously, we'd have this open stairwell. So, what I was referring to, it would be a third access point, or it may be an elevator that, that would come into play there. Going forward a little bit, design-wise, this is black and white, and I know you guys have color, and I also have a color copy that, that if anyone wants to see it, that's here loosely as well. Some of the things I wanted to talk about with the massing, is I know there has been, and even when we, bless you.
She blessed you.
When we went through the workshop, there was some concern, and I, I believe I addressed that concern, of building height. One of the things that we did with the building height is, I think it's on the other one, but one, one of the things with the building height is that basically, we designed this to be much more human scale of a design and more of a unique apartment building than you see anywhere around your town. This is basically based on an enlarged cape, if you will. So, what we're doing is, we're doing a single-story, a little bit steeper, pish roof, and then adding a dormer the full length to get that second story. So, what that does, it allows, as you can see, allows a, a complete flexibility of not going up to the second floor, then building a gable beyond that, because when you start doing that, then the building gets higher and higher and higher. So, what, what I was thinking might be a good compromise is to basically keep this design in a residential scale. And one of the things I wanted to show, I apologize, you guys have the color, but this is in the black and white version, is this is the existing building. So, when we looked at the existing building and the design, you could see how the new building obviously took a lot of the complements that were going on with the existing surrounding vernacular, obviously with the, with the gable roof, different window style, more, more of a post-war type, type building, and we basically freshened it up with more of a Cape Cod look. And what, what this does is basically, what it allows us to do is, this building right here is the new building, which I just showed you. The existing building, which I actually have a note on ours, we have to do a detailed structural evaluation to determine exactly how many units were, so the units will not go above 12, it'll go lower if not anything. And right now, it's kind of a little difficult because they have their manufacturing operation is right in there to, to make all those determinations, but what we planned on doing is ripping off the roof and matching it to, to the new building. So, you could see, this, this is literally this right underneath it, the brick building that's there, and, and basically what we're building up is, is the roof. We're taking the roof off and having, adding that second floor. Now, all of these square footages are all determined based upon your code requirements for a one and two-bedroom. There will be a combination, like I was saying earlier, of a one and two-bedroom. It may change a hair, because a one, a two-bedroom, you really have to have around 850 to 900 square feet minimum to make a two-bedroom work, and anything lower than that is a single bedroom. So, what we're probably going to do is have larger, larger two-bedroom units when we start going to 1,100, if we combine those, those outside corridors like I was suggesting. There was a few questions that came up, which, some were by the board and some were in the review. Actually, if you noted, the engineer's review was extremely minimal, and it was, it's, we were pretty happy actually with the comments that came back, because it didn't seem like very large impact. If it requires a backflow preventer, obviously, we will have a backflow preventer designed in there. We're working with Monroe County Department of Health to make that determination, and, the county itself. County surveyor, we're going to check with the surveyor about exactly what the survey report would be. Our surveyors, Airpoint surveyors, you are probably more familiar with them as Avery. Bob Avery is on my staff, and out of Chi, he's been in, in the community for decades and is very well versed on this. One of the questions was, I'll get back to when I go into detail about the pediatric offices, as far as parking, we're completely fine on that, but I'll get into detail on that. And then, they, they asked about if there was any, any improvements for, for the sidewalk, and what we did, actually, improvements within the right-of-way, I'm, excuse me. And this ties into a couple of things. Is the only improvements that we were anticipating, the answer was no to begin with. There wasn't any improvements other than utility connections. But from some, some of the town comments, planning board comments that came through, pedestrian connectivity, what we did do is we added in a sidewalk connection right to Hudson. So, now, there is work within the right-of-way, and obviously, we'll have to do a letter of credit and things of that nature, which is very typical for this connection. We thought that was a great idea. It puts circulation right out to the, right out to the road, which, right now, the circulation through the manufacturing lot is right through the parking lot to Hudson. So, what we're going to do is, we're circling the entire facility, the new building, with a, with a sidewalk, and bringing it right straight to Hudson. And obviously, there'll be a connection point on Hudson when we feather that in, that's what's shown. So, the answer is, now there is, but we did it as a benefit from, from a town request, and we have no problem with it, we think it's great. The other thing we did is, there was a question that I believe Mary brought up about making this more community feel to it, and how would the rest of the apartments feel about this? And we thought it would be kind of a nice thing to, to add, like a gazebo out there. So, so what we're doing is, is to have this connection and transition, is we're going to put a gazebo out there, probably a pre-engineered, I think we'd spec'd out a 12-foot diameter, not, not a huge one by any means, but a smaller area, and then it would, it would give them some place, you know, to sit on a park bench, things of that nature throughout, throughout this facility. So, so we thought it'd be kind of nice, rather than, to your point, you're like, this view, view shed from the side, I showed the buildings, but what we're envisioning right here is, we did, I'm jumping around a little bit, I apologize, is, is this is a bio-retention area right here, now that, that is picked up, which we have the calks right on the drawings that we submitted to you from one of the engineer's comments, and also, so you're going to have this little drainage swale, if you will, then the gazebo right next to it. So, this will be nicely landscaped, which we have a landscape plan we submitted in as well, from the transition of the apartments, transition of a nice landscaping to the building. So, so really, what we're, what we're doing is, it was, we're trying to enhance the overall feel and the overall opportunities that are throughout this, this whole facility. One of the things that we marked on this plan, that you could see on your color versions a little bit clearer, is that this light area is the new paving. This, this area right here is existing paving that will be repaired, you know, and will do an overlay on it and whatnot, but it is, it is impervious area. So, I just wanted to make that point. The bulk standards, we did add them to the plan very clearly, and meets all the criteria that, that is, is required for this size. There was a comment on the existing parcel lines were very difficult to read, so we actually created, I think I have it with me, a, you should have in your package, yep, that colored version, that, quite frankly, they're confusing to us, too. They are, they are a little bit, it is easier to see, and I, hopefully, that clarifies exactly where, where the zoning is, you know, just a little bit clearer picture of that. One of the things that we don't normally do, we usually put the outline of the parking was on there, but I, I had the guys add, add the striping as well, so it's very clear to see where the parking areas are and the grading and whatnot. So, it, it's kind of like that happy medium that you see the outline of the parking, but it gets a little bit too busy. So, when you look at your grading plan, it does show all the striping on there, and it's clear, clearly so you could just see that it's a, a parking area. And then the stormwater bio-retention I just referred to, and with that, the area we're disturbing is under an acre, so it does not require a SWIP, but we are doing the calks per the engineer's requirements anyway. So, we do have the calks of, of, for the water that's going to be contained in that area. So, that's kind of a slippery slope, because once you start doing the calks, it starts to get into a SWIP, but we are not required a SWIP on, on this. So, we did provide all those to you. Let me go over one more thing. There was a question about the lighting plan, and we did add a lighting plan in the last submission. So, pretty much, I just want to get to that one. Right here. So, one of the things you'll notice in the lighting plan is obviously they're dark sky compliant lighting. There is no flooding of lighting beyond this point on the property, so there's nothing, nothing over any other parcels or anything of that nature. So, what we did with the initial submission at the, at the workshop, is there was obviously a series of comments that I just went over, and we addressed every single one of the comments, including the, the town engineer's comments, and also the planning board comments, and the, the staff comments that we had to date, not, not obviously the comments that will be forthcoming tonight, but we tried to make sure you guys had a pretty comprehensive package that we feel is very minimal impacts, and I think it'll be a, a real, a real amenity to the community as well. With that, I open up the floor.
And we will open the floor up for questions from the, anyone present. Please join us up the podium and tell us who you are, and say again.
You can let us go first, and then...
You can do it either way.
Hi, thank you. My name is Judy Zabelny. I live at 131 Miller Lane, which I think is near what you're proposing. Where is Miller Lane from?
Yeah, I think it's on the backside. Let me just focus on Craig.
My property abuts the Eagle Ridge property.
So, you're to the east of it, then?
Uh...
You should be back there, isn't it?
Probably south. Uh, let's see, this is Hudson.
Yep, and this is Ridge, so you're back there, right?
This is Ridge, so I'm, I think that's my house right there.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so you're planning to build here?
We're here, so it really, literally, you wouldn't even see it.
Okay.
It's right back there.
Okay. And that was my only question. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Anyone else wishes to be heard? Okay? We'll close that portion and come to you guys, starting with you, Michael. Come on.
I don't, I don't really have a whole lot of anything. Could we come back to me? I gotta...
Absolutely.
I have to generate some questions.
All right. Well, you went.
No questions.
Ellen, I know you'd have some.
Yeah, there's a daycare center currently located on Hudson. What's going to happen with that?
Um, right now, they're staying, and I believe they renewed their lease, and as far as I know, they're staying. So, so there's, there's no anticipated change with that. And that's, that's closer to the entrance you're talking.
Yeah, but it would be closer to the newer building that you're building, right?
Uh, not really, not really. It's, it's right, it's right over here, and the building's way over here. So, you're talking, you're talking, it's, I mean, it would be an amenity for the people in the apartments, if they did have kids, they could go to the daycare center, but it's, it's for property, it's three properties over, three properties shifted over.
Okay, and there's no, like, exchange of the, the clients between that and where, what's going to be used for the apartments?
They, they own it, they own it, so it's the...
I guess I mean, when parents are dropping their kids off?
I don't anticipate that at all. And, and if parents were dropping their kids off, it, it literally is close enough that they wouldn't be driving to that, they would, they would walk.
And people that are using it from outside, that not necessarily are, were, live at the complex.
Correct, correct. That, that is correct. There may be a few, there may be a few, but there, my understanding is there's not a ton from that. It's, most of the traffic generated, from my understanding, I apologize about not knowing, every, every single avenue is coming off of Hudson, it's not coming from the backside of Eagle.
Okay. And then, just because I happened to read an article about lighting, what kind of lighting are you guys using on this project?
Well, it's, the, the lighting itself is basically, it's all shoebox straight down, and, and it's dark side compliant. As far as the exact light fixtures, we have not picked them out, but I have no problem submitting the fixture to the lighting, to the administrative staff, we can make that a condition approval.
Is it going to be LED? Is it going to be a...
I want it to be LED, and, and the one thing that the, my client have been fantastic working with me, you know, some clients push it down your throat, and I've been advising them quite extensively on what to do, and I, I am totally pro-LED on every, their price is negligible, it's really, and most fixtures can be retrofit anyway. So, I will, I will respond to that with one, at a minimum, it'll be LED fixtures.
The article I was reading was mentioning that the white or blue tinted LEDs, the AMA actually has come out against them, and you may want to consider yellow tint.
Yeah, we could do that, we could do that.
Because they tend to interfere with people's sleep patterns and things like that, just because of their brightness?
Absolutely.
I'm not saying that that's how we have to go, and I'm not saying that that's a definitive word, but I just happened to stumble upon that. I just need a little better explanation on the combination of the end units. Are they, how are they not interfering with the egress for the fire?
Well, well, here's, let me do it on the back of the sheet here.
Sorry, I'm just...
So, basically, no, that's, that's fine, so, so, excuse my chicken scratch, so, basically, you have a floor, here's your stair, you have a floor here and a floor here. So, basically, you could have a connection point here and a connection point here, in the hallway. So, so more or less, if we shift, if we shift that stair off a little bit deeper into the hallway, what it, what it allows us to do is have a connection point at the backside and just put the door here, so, on the second floor. So, so more or less, you have one that's underneath the stair that passes through... So more or less, you have one that's underneath the stair that passes through and one that's above the stair that passes through. If that makes sense.
That makes sense.
They would be offset though, you couldn't put them right in line, obviously.
And the swale will run to the north part of that open area that exists?
Correct, correct.
I think...
Mary?
Well, first of all, thank you for thinking about the gazebo. I'm sure they'll like it. And I want to thank you for coming tonight and being well-prepared and answering all the questions that were given to you by our town engineers.
Thank you.
I've been questioning the proposal for a couple of years now. We've talked about this for a while. And I was hoping, but I can understand that you can't, I was hoping you'd replicate what you have, that you would have that contiguous figure of the four units all the way around the property. This helped me feel better about it, your rendering, about what it would look like. And I agree with you wholeheartedly that the 20-unit fits on that property very nicely. The parking is between that and the 10. And as long as you've got the pediatric group's okay with that lot for use by all, I think you're good to go. It floored me when I came in, I came here early tonight because I went to Eagle Ridge again today before the meeting, and I talked with a couple of the residents and I think they have mixed thought about it. And the thought I had is that some of the units you have are so small that they invite frequent new renters, only because somebody comes in, they're right out of college, they steal a year or two, they find another place and move on. And I was hoping that they would see more of the 900 square units than you put in there. But I know the economics control that.
Yep. I was going to answer that with one question. When we presented this to, I'm, I, don't quote me on this, but I'm 90% sure we're going to have less units. So the end caps, they're really seriously looking at making those larger units. So they're going to be about 1,100 square foot end caps, so that, which would be a two-bedroom, obviously.
You know, when I, when I came here from the site, I marked this room off and I could fit your average of 725 into this room, so this room would hold four of your apartments.
This is 725, you said?
No, no, 725 is your average.
Right, right, and that's, I'd have to, I'd have to calculate it, but I can assure you, I design apartments all the time and actually we have, we actually have a waiting list on Prince Street, which we have 500 square foot units, but it's a different city setting. But these units will be higher, higher end, but not high-end, you know what I'm saying? They're more, more of a luxury, more of a modern amenities and stuff like that. But to answer your question, you are absolutely right, the two-bedroom units definitely have longer renters. So you definitely have a better, a lot of the one-bedrooms happens, what happens is there's transitional or divorcees or whatnot. When you see divorcees that want, have a child or something of that nature, they usually want a two-bedroom. And that really is the market that, or a young family starting out or something like that. So we, or empty nesters that just want the extra space to have, you know, a study or something of that nature. So there is definitely a demand for the two-bedrooms and the larger units. It's, what I'm hoping is that, that we not only build these buildings, but also renovate and potentially look at opportunities of the existing buildings, not, I'm not talking site plan itself, I'm just talking about freshing them up so the whole community kind of bonds together.
Well, you mentioned to us when you were here quite a while back that your intent was to go ahead and start upgrading all of those smaller units that you have.
Yes, and that is.
You've done that, by the way?
They, they do it as people move out internally, but they haven't done anything externally. And part of the reason they haven't done anything externally is they want to establish a palette from this development that they start having accents that are peppered throughout the whole. They want, quite frankly, they wanted to know what they can do, you know, so in a site plan, and they needed more density. The one thing we all look at is what can we can do with what's there, but you need a critical mass to fund all those other improvements, if you will. So if we get this, this going, the answer is yes, that is the intention.
Is there a timeframe?
The timeframe for this one is they want to put the shovel in the ground as soon as they have the approval. So I would anticipate these could be open April, May of next year.
You're talking new buildings?
New build. The new, the new building right after that one would be the renovation. And then while they're doing the renovation, they're going to evaluate doing, what they, what they talked about doing potentially is, and to Mary, your question, is they don't want to impact people that have been there for a long, long, long time. So they don't want to move people out of their homes. But what they were doing is looking for opportunities where it's very difficult to do construction on one unit within a whole building. So what they try to do is relocate the people that, like say for instance, they have two that are vacant and two that are there, try to relocate the two that are there to a building that has temporarily, so they could renovate the entire building at once. So that's what their plan was. It's kind of hard to have like one, internally, not a big deal. When you start doing external improvements, it starts to get like you're making more mayhem than you're, than you're getting benefit out of it.
Since you haven't really finalized your plans about how many units you're going to have, how do you finalize your parking?
We finalize it about the maximum. So that's completely the maximum parking that could be established. So basically, we'll have, we'll have more than enough parking to accommodate the units if they go down in size.
Well, I think I've got you down as having about 100 spots here?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So you're, you're definitely within that realm. But keep in mind, we're also accommodating to one of the town engineer's questions of his concern, which we address, is that, okay, now we convert, we convert this, now if you have the parking here, we have to have enough parking for the buildings that are already there.
Right.
So that's why there's that amount of parking. This parking is not just servicing here. What I envision happening is this parking lot right here would obviously be towards, this parking lot will be for this new building, this parking lot will be for the renovated building, and then the center parking would be for the existing manufacturing facilities that are there. It's just going to be a natural progression, but we accommodate all, and the bulk standards have it accommodating all of the square footages.
I think I'd be remiss not saying that, I'd really not, I don't want to over-pave.
Oh, I agree.
I mean, you've got a lot of pavement there now. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know how to address this because it's, it's so much up in the air. I'd like to ask you, you know, when you're all done, could you tear up 40 spots because you have too much parking?
Well, well, you know, you know, to answer your question, what we could do, and I have no problem doing analysis, and I'm sure they wouldn't have a problem with that, is what we can do as part of the condition of approval is to any parking that's not necessary at this moment for the functionality, is we could landbank it. You know, and then, and then keep it for future parking and just not pave it at the moment.
I don't know if the code specifically allows that. I think if you're going to construct less than would be required, you would need a variance. Are there landbanking provisions?
I don't think that's what he's saying. He's saying he'll meet the requirement, right?
Oh, okay. Then yeah, as long as you're meeting the minimum.
No, what we're saying is if we meet the minimum and if we don't need any of the other ones, we could landbank them.
Excess over the minimum, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so if you have, if there's more parking and you're only going to construct it on an as-needed basis, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Right, so construction, and that might be something that this board could consider with the approval of the town engineer review and, and town staff.
That's fine.
If this, and the planning board chair as well, if that makes sense typically.
Can we pass the buck to you to do that?
You sure can, absolutely. And that could be something, a provision that they get, it gets as part of the building permit process when, if this board were to approve the application and then it advances to the building permit. That's something that could be reviewed administratively, similar to how some small field changes happen out on the site when a project is getting built. Those modifications do happen on occasion.
And you also would take care of governing the reduction of the number of units and that kind of stuff? I mean, is that...
So if the interior of the build-out, in other words, you're approving the footprint and the size of the building in general, the general layout of the site of how it's going to look. If the interior build-out of the building itself, so say the 20-unit building doesn't change footprint and now it's going to only be 18 units, that really becomes a building permit and maybe a fire marshal issue in terms of review, it wouldn't have to come back for the board because the floor plan is being altered.
Will you guide us in putting a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mike, before you give up the microphone, one of the things we discussed at the workshop was as our resident arborist, if you had any comments regarding the plantings.
You know, I looked at, at all they have, they, they've certainly selected some unique plants. They got a gum tree in here. I mean, one doesn't see gumwood a lot, or that's kind of a messy thing, you got some crab apple too, but...
Don't steal my question, I just came up with that.
I'm sorry, why don't you handle it then?
No, I was going to say, can you avoid the crab apple? We've mentioned that on projects.
Before.
Prior to this. I know you've got listed here that the fruit persists. It does until, you know, a windy day, or if you have kids that are living in the, in the units, they, I don't know, I don't know about you, but those became, became projectiles as a, as a young person, you know? So that might be something to, not, not, I don't, I don't...
We don't like to take down trees either. We really don't. We like to work around them, they're beautiful.
Well, these are before you put them up.
Yeah, it's not true, true, but, but...
Something, something other than a crab apple. I mean, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff.
There are, there are a number of flowering trees that are comparable in size and shape to a crab apple that do not bear fruit.
Absolutely, flowering pear, we, you know, things of that nature.
Flowering pears, flowering pears quite large, yeah.
But, but I'm just saying, we've, we've put those in place and have very good success on them, you know, so...
Great street tree.
Yep.
In your, in your parking lot, you have some very fragile plants. The planting's nice, it looks great, but I'm just wondering what the plow is going to put the snow on top of those and how they're going to survive.
Everything we selected, our landscape architect took a look at and feels comfortable that these are all, these are all going to, other than, I will put the disclaimer on, they have to be watered in their drought that we have right here, and they should be protected with salt and things of that nature. But, but one of the things that we're, we're trying to instill in a lot of our projects is not using salt projects as well for, for the winter and using different alternatives that don't affect the landscaping and don't have as much of a mess. There are, there's always a chance that, I mean, this, this year, the reason why I used to be much more, how do I say it, much more confident on the plant species before this season, where we had quite a few issues on drought, drought-related items, more, more so than salt. So I can tell you if there is certain, certain recommendations that you wanted, wanted to put in there, we'll definitely take a look at them and, or if there's ones in question that you want to pass along to the town for consideration, I don't think that's any issue.
It would purely be something that you would address on your own. I'd hate to have you put in 80 juniper around the parking lot and have the snow just, I mean, that snow that's going to go from that parking lot on top of your bushes is going to be salt.
Right.
Are we able to consult with the conservation board on that? On suggesting plantings? Can they, I mean, I don't know if they're able to submit a letter?
Well, I'm actually, you know, I would yield maybe to our deputy town attorney about that connection, but what I was going to just indicate to the board is that the site plan, you know, as presented and approved stands for time until it's changed, so that areas that they show, that are shown as landscaped would need to be maintained and landscaped so that over time, if the landscaping were to die or not, wouldn't fail in some way, the town would be able to compel the property owner to remedy the, the condition so that it was in conformance with their site plan, so that if something doesn't hold up the way it's supposed to, they would then be able to come back and they would have to replant in areas where it failed.
Fair enough.
Okay.
And I don't think it shows where you're going to put your plowed snow.
There's one little spot somewhere.
But from what I can see, I mean, you're not going to pile snow on the end caps where the plantings are, and you're not going to pile snow on that north border. You're going to push all your snow to the east and pile it at the east end of the parking lots, from what I can tell, and there's no...
Actually, the dotted line, if you will, it kind of looks like a little, that is all snow storage around the entire...
And that's at the east end, correct?
It's all the way around, it's actually, there's a whole, it's, it's, if you look at the site plan, that little dotted line that goes around the whole perimeter.
It's, let me see this.
There's like a, it's like a 10 or 15-foot dotted line that goes around the entire perimeter of the back parking lot. It's, it's on all sides.
That does create a problem then, because you're piling snow right on top of where you supposedly have plantings on the north side of that parking lot.
And again, any damage that, that is the planning, to Carrie's point, she is correct, is that we will be responsible for maintaining those. There's going to be some spring cleanup, without a question. There's, there always is, there's, and, and literally in, in the site, it is pretty tight, you're absolutely right. We didn't want to impact the snow storage any more than, than is already. So basically, what, the easiest way to, the easiest way to plow any, any parking lot is on every side, and then it doesn't build up to one mound. So if you, if you go all the way around the perimeter, it's, it's more of a volume of snow than building, you know, as we've seen in malls and whatnot, that big mountain that the kids are playing in. You know, so if you, if you put it all, all the way around, it's going to, it's going to dissipate a little bit quicker, it's not as big of a mound as well. They're all, I mean, if you wanted to put it in one place, we could put it in one place, but I would not suggest that.
That area, you're going to landbank for us?
That, that's possible, now that's possible.
Anything else, anybody else?
I have nothing.
Okay.
You were going to show us some material, though.
Oh, yes. Thank you, it was in front of me and it was out of sight, out of mind, I apologize.
Right. I was going to say, I saw him take all the time to put it together when he was setting up, so...
So basically, we have a different window line, we have a combination of the shapes and siding. You'll notice that the color schemes, I have a highlighted black marker around.
Have us pass it around.
Yeah, you can just pass them around if you'd like. So here's, here's a speck on the window. Sorry about that. It was sitting in front of me and I didn't... This is the water table, brick, brickstone, it's a veneer. And then this is the timberline roof, which, which you're probably going with a nantucket morning. It's, I'm between these two, actually. So I think the lighter one will probably come into play a little bit better. I do have the whole board, it was like huge, I could bring that in if however you want to see it, for the timberline product. But it's a GAF product, it's pretty, it's an architectural grade shingle. It's pretty common.
I like the rendering that you've given us. I can't place what I think it, it looks like. I said, oh, that looks like, and then I never came up with an answer. It looks like a bungalow somewhere in a...
Yeah.
Adirondack Mountains?
That's, that's kind of what I was going for, somewhere between a cape and a bungalow because, quite frankly, these units kind of are. They're, they're a little bit unique in that they're four units per building, and I thought that was a good opportunity to kind of, you know, capture something like that. And the pergola element, the white pergola element is also, that you could see around the perimeter, is also going to be the same look of the gazebo as well.
I'm not crazy about the facade of the elevations facing parking areas, NTS. It just looks blah.
Okay, okay, and, and one, one of the things we're doing is, is trying to, trying to incorporate between the windows, the pergola, and, and increasing landscaping in between. I think we can make something pretty neat in there.
I'm going to say shutters, but let it go with that.
And I apologize for my rendering skills, so I just tried to...
No, 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 I like that, I just didn't like that one.
But the, the one thing about the rendering, which I think is effective, is that this is an actual photo. So the top is an actual photo, the one, this one right here, the top is the photo taken and the bottom is actually just superimposed on top of that exact photo. So it really does give you an accurate depiction of what you're going to be looking at.
Okay. Thank you much.
You're very welcome.
Do I close that portion now?
If there are no other comments or questions from the board, we can close the hearing.
I have two agenda items, one at 1,700, one at 7... Do we have, do we do both or just do one?
Well, you have two actions before you. One is the recommendation to the town board on the special permit, which again is needed for the multifamily residential in the manufacturing zone.
Correct.
And then the second item before you is site plan approval. So that's what you... So that's why you, probably why you have two different sheets.
So we need to do seeker on the site plan approval, but not on the town board referral?
We've got the seeker here also.
Correct.
Which order do you want us to do?
Well, let's, let's, let's start with the seeker.
Yep, that makes sense.
And how do I mark that?
And town staff provided for your consideration, the part two and three of the environmental assessment form. Share this one.
If you've all looked at it, there was nothing that impacted from seeker at all. The reverse of the form is all in the, no impact, a small impact, so-
And so if the board's in agreement with that, then somebody can make a motion to issue a negative declaration under seeker.
I would make a motion for an unlisted action, negative declaration.
You writing that down, Donna? Where do I write that down? Under, under seeker?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have one, though.
So unlisted?
Second it.
Negative dec, negative declaration.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Who, who, who?
We'll let Mary do it.
Mary made it?
No, I think, Rich did.
Rich made it, Mary second.
All in favor of negative declaration here?
Aye.
Aye.
Negatives? Thanks. Phew, it's fast. Only took me an hour. Who else?
Now what are you writing?
No.
So we can, we can get that, either you can do that now or we can do it later. So all-
Absent, A, A, Bernie's not here, absent. H, focus.
Right.
Total, A five.
Five, zero.
Zero.
Two absents.
Two.
Okay? And then we can, whichever order the board's comfortable, if somebody wants to make a motion to issue a, a recommendation to the town board, to issue the special permit, and, or you can combine it with the site plan approval resolution, or you can do them separately.
Can I do it right on this?
Mm-hmm.
Which is the, both of this?
That's right. The preliminary and final together.
Mm-hmm.
The-
Okay.
Can I make a motion on the site plan?
Did you guys have?
Generally speaking, in the past, the board has made a, a motion specific to the site plan review or an, and/or approval, and then they would do the town board referrals separately-
Okay.
-as a sep, a separate motion, but I leave, I defer to you as the-
Either is proper, so whichever you're comfortable with, it may be cleaner if you do two separate ones, so the town board only has that action before them, that's fine.
I'd like to do a motion on the site plan upon the matter of request by Fitzgerald Engineering and Holland Trotta Project, acting as agent for Eagle Ridge Estates for preliminary and final site approval, plan approvals to construct an eighty-seven hundred square foot, two-story apartment building, twenty units. Can we say no more than twenty units, Carrie?
Yes, if that's the motion.
Yes, no more than twenty units, and to convert a single-story building into a six-thousand square foot, two-story apartment building of no more than twelve units, with parking and site-related improvements on premises seventeen hundred Hudson Avenue in an M manufacturing district, and to develop additional parking area and site drainage for the purpose of apartments on premises one seven seven six Hudson Avenue Eagle Ridge Apartments in an R four residential district.
Would you consider adding a condition that the town administratively review and that the applicant would need to seek approval of the lighting fixtures?
I would love to see that unit.
And I think-
Is that a motion?
I think we also were looking for a condition on the, the construction of the parking areas, that they be done in tandem with the amount of units that are actually going to be constructed. Is that another-
Subject to town administrative approval.
Mm-hmm.
I would second the motion.
These are great friendly amendments.
Michael, you may, just before the vote, wanna open it up and see if there's any other discussion, any other proposed conditions from the board?
Michael or Mary, 'cause you two guys had your say.
I have none.
I, I have none.
Okay. All in favor of the motion is?
Aye.
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 Aye. So everybody's here.
Mm-hmm.
I'll say this again, although I need another sheet to do the next one, don't I?
Mm-hmm.
So I've got an absent, I've got an aye, I've got an aye, and an aye.
And that'll also include, I'm sure the town has standard conditions, that they included any site plan approval.
That's true, yeah, there's a standard record of motion sheet and decision letter that, that the town staff will put out.
Okay, compliance with engineering-
Correct, yeah, that's boilerplate for all approvals.
I could've saved myself a lot of writing if I had read down here that on the motion by board members, was all there for me. You had it all done, thank you, and I didn't follow it. You're gonna have to trust Donna.
And then next is the, the recommendation to the town board on the, the special permit.
Can I put it on here?
Do it. Do I just read it off the thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, and just say something.
Yeah, there are very, we have a few.
It might write this out, then?
Right.
Yeah, so this is site plan approval.
And seeker, and also-
And we don't need to do seeker again, that's all set, and you don't need it.
No.
So we can just say-
I just put the recommendation to town board.
Yep, and so it'll be negative or positive, depending on the recommendation, I assume it's gonna be positive.
Somebody wanna make the recommendation to town board?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make a, a motion-
Michael.
-of town board referral upon the matter of request by Fitzgerald Engineering and Holland Trotta Project, acting as agent for East Ridge Estates for a special use permit to conduct a two multifamily apartment buildings on premises seventeen hundred Hudson Avenue, Eagle Ridge Estates in an M manufacturing district. Based on the presentation, we recommend a positive decision on that to the town board. Does that work?
Yes.
I second it. Any discussion, conditions you'd like the town board to impose, anything else you'd want them to consider as part of that?
Just the comments from the site plan approval, which I'm sure-
I don't know how much of a package, what do they get from us? They just get a yea or nay, pretty much?
And they'll get all the same underlying materials that you all received from staff.
Correct, and we can also provide them with a copy of the, the decision letter and the record of motion with those conditions.
Okay. That's all set, can we come to a vote with it? Please and thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, we already did.
You're right. Did we have a second of the motion?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Yeah, Mary was the second. I gotta put an absent and an A and an A and a-
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
I think we're done.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing this.
Yeah, here, we've got some of them. Those were give out, freebies.
Well, I gotta know what I picked.
You actually intend to use it?
Darn. You could have them after that.
Michael's gonna take them home, Silas' house.
Sales really close coming.
Thank you very much, you have a great day. Thank you.
Can I do that now?
Yeah, that's fine, you can do it now.
Okay. On, on the agenda, there is-
This one.
A tabled item, PB.
Are you referring to PB sixteen oh three dash three?
Yes.
For Lighthouse Point?
Yes.
There's, there's no new information to report this time, seeker is still under review, and so that is all for now.
So I, I thought we should mention that it's here, it remains on the table?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the same would, would, would hold true for the referral from zoning board, which was case number PZB fifteen oh four dash four, and my understanding from the applicant is that they're awaiting some analysis that would be relevant to the seeker information that's needed to be reviewed by this board. And so that too would, there's no new action, no new information to share at this time.
Does that necessarily mean that it moves on the table to the next agenda?
I think what we would do is wait and see if, when the new information is received by the town and reviewed by the town engineer, and at that time, if it's deemed that there's sufficient information to declare the, or to review the seeker documentation and make a determination of significance, then at that time, you would be able to move forward with that.
Okay, so let, let it be known that we addressed both Densmore Road and, and Lighthouse.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, excuse me, chairman, if you don't mind, um-
Temp.
There's, if there's, um, just to clarify, there is the other tabled item, are you gonna address that later after this one, after this application? There's a rezoning application, referral from town board?
Mm-hmm. Okay. So let's, yeah, you wanna do that, or, no, we're, we're gonna go on with-
Okay.
Are we, are we moving to the, to the Royal, Royal Car Wash?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. He's already here.
So I think Donna would, I don't know that it's been called yet.
Do you need a mo-
This is-
It's tabled, do you need a motion to bring it off the table?
This application has been tabled?
It was tabled and to, to bring them back again, so it was off the, so yeah, it was tabled at the last meeting, so that more information could be prepared and provided.
Is, and is there a continuing public hearing?
I don't know if they closed the public hearing at the last meeting, I, I don't, there weren't many, many comments or any comments about the, about the projects, and my understanding is that the public hearing was closed for this one.
Okay. So yeah, that, that's fine, you can announce it, Donna, and then Michael can-
Okay. Case PB sixteen oh seven dash two, upon the matter of request by Passer Associates, acting as agent for Meredith, Meredith Enterprises for preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a car wash facility and multi-self storage buildings with site-related improvements on premises thirteen sixty-five East Ridge Road in M Manufacturing District.
Before you start, is that, is that Mar Danth Enterprises?
Mar Danth.
Okay, thank you.
It was close enough, we're good.
It's, it's been a couple different ways, I just wondered, would it, thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
Ready?
I'm ready.
I'm Matthew Moore, I'm here from Passer Associates on behalf of our client, Mar Danth Enterprises. With me is Anthony Daniele from Mar Danth Enterprises. I believe that you all have seen this project and have been familiar with it, this is the second time coming before the board. I just wanted to take a second, try to keep things brief and go over some of the minor changes that we've made as a result of our last appearance in front of the board. So coming over to the plan here. The first thing that we, the first major minor change that we made is we reduced the number of stacking lanes, down from three to two. This ended up bringing our car stacking down to about thirty-five cars, as opposed to the low forties that it originally was. Even though we lost a couple stacking spaces there, we're not anticipating any problems with that. There are a couple different Royal Car Washes in the area, all on busier streets, and none of them have issues, and they all have lesser stacking, so I think we're good there. We added a sidewalk from the office space to the car, to the pay stalls, to allow employees access to that area in case there's, you know, anything that goes wrong in the area. We moved the dumpster enclosure from the west side of the parking to, over near the stacking area, to allow that clear line of sight to the pay stalls for the, for the employees there. Again, just trying to improve the efficiency of the pay stall area. And we also added additional parking over here by the three-story building, we put an extra spot in there, it's kinda tight, it's all we really could fit in that area, but we, we feel that should be sufficient for the self-storage area. Couple other things to note, we did address all of the comments issued from La Bella on behalf of the town, we've returned those to the town, everything was good. And then another thing that we wanted to bring up is, at the last meeting, the other side, at the last meeting, the board requested that for the single-story self-storage units, that we changed the color from a yellow, a bright yellow, to a white. We decided that we would try to meet you guys in the middle and go with a royal, or a vanilla cream color. Some of the reasons we did that is we were concerned that white would get dirty too easily. We felt vanilla cream was a safe middle, where it's not quite as bright, but it would also hide the dirt a little better, and to be a little easier to maintain in the long run, so that's why we went with the vanilla cream shown here.
Is that a vanilla cream you're showing us?
It is. Vanilla cream.
Men are colorblind, so to me, it looks pretty, still yellowy.
It's, it's a mix between yellow and white, an off-white. It still is slightly yellow, though. Again, to hide, hide the dirt and help with the long-term maintenance of the rooftops.
Yeah, and Anthony Daniele is the developer. I would note, too, that, you know, the visibility of these rooftops is really minimalized by that three-story building, which from, from East Ridge Road, you really won't see much of, of the rooftop. From one oh four, you may see a little bit more, but there are trees right now between the property and the self-storage. The, the color scheme, from a marketing perspective, obviously, there's a reason we picked yellow, it wasn't, you know, wasn't on a whim, it is the marketing colors of the car wash. One of the first renditions actually had the three-story building, quite an obnoxious combination of blue and yellow, and- You know, what we did with that building is really try to tone it down and have it complement the car wash, which is in front of it, using brick and more earth tones, it does have a dash of yellow and blue in there, but not annoying, and so, you know, these garages, you know, rightfully so, I mean, the, the bright yellow roof would be a little, a little too much, I, I think I agreed with that comment, and so the goal was to tone it down. The reality, though, is if you don't go with, you know, white generally doesn't work because it does look bad after a short period of time, just because it's hard to keep white clean, you end up with the soot, or whatever it is that falls out of the sky, it's not my thing, but I know it falls out of the sky and lands on stuff that's white, and it doesn't look good. So then you'd be going to a darker color, which from a heat perspective is not a great idea for the environment or the stuff that's stored in the self-storage units. So we try to minimize the generation of heat.
Am, am I not seeing any color except white on the roof?
This, you, well, this is the three-story building, so you probably won't see much roof, it's a flat roof.
Okay.
So, so, you're seeing a sky on a cloudy day, but hopefully it'll be blue more than it'll be white, but there is a little bit of a pitched roof up here, and I would be guessing, if I told you the color of that roof, I would, I would imagine that would be more of a traditional shingle.
Yeah, it's gonna be black, I believe.
Yeah, charcoal, that would not be yellow.
So that's just a facade on that turns out to be the east side of the building, is it?
The way this sits on the property-
It's the north side, north, north side of the building.
It's gonna be in the north side of the three-story.
With the sign on it, right.
No, that'd be the south side with the door.
Yeah.
No, north side, sorry.
No.
Right, yeah, it'll be the north side. So that'll be the side facing Ridge Road.
Where's the heating cooling unit for those, that three-story building?
They're gonna be on the roof.
It, it could, it could potentially be on the roof, so-
So I've got four stories now.
Uh, no, it could just be, it is climate-controlled, but I mean, the rooftop units are generally about, you know, my experience from restaurants, you know, three to four feet tall, and if you put them in the middle of the roof, you probably wouldn't see them. That being said, if, you know, the town wanted there to be some kind of a protective parapet or something, but, you know, you're talking a, a protrusion of about four feet, not a, you know, full story.
Yeah, what's the noise level, though, on that?
On the HVAC units?
Yeah.
Minimal. I mean, it, again, when, when, when we say climate-controlled building in, in the self-storage world, that just means that in the summertime, the air conditioning goes on enough to keep the humidity out, but it's still probably eighty, eighty-five degrees in the wintertime, the furnace kicks on when it drops below forty to keep things from freezing. The furnace kicks on when it drops below 40 to keep things from freezing. It's not a traditional climate-controlled like you would in an apartment or a hotel or anything that really required personal comfort. That's not the intent of climate-controlled.
Does that have to be self-contained?
I'm sorry, I said that when the, the HVAC.
HVAC system.
Not typically.
If it's on the roof, does it have to have?
That's up to the, the board's discretion as to whether you want it to be screened in some way. There are, if, a lot of roof-mounted systems, a lot of times you, they're there and you don't really notice them because they've been screened in some way. They have small roof-mounted.
Yeah, I would also keep in mind, you know, being a three-story building from a line-of-sight standpoint, you know, as long as you don't put the units right on the edge of the building, you probably would barely see the top if at all.
All right, the building is 55 feet wide. It's rather huge. Put in the middle, very hard to see from the road.
Right, do you have to be a really, quite a distance away to see the top of the roof? And at that point?
Yeah, I just said we'd never discuss at night.
Right.
Wanted to ask that question, sorry.
Oh, it's okay. It's good. What else do we need? Have we satisfied all of the requests that we made of them in the last hearing, Karen?
My understanding that there were some questions that were raised by the town engineers response, those have been responded to by the applicant. They're presented here. I believe that all of the questions that were addressed, there were some issue, a couple of questions with respect to the, the cross-access. The town engineer did take a second look at that to ensure that it would, would and could operate safely. Mike Chaffron did take a look, from La Bella, did take a look at that again, just so you're all aware.
That was noted for your specific.
I appreciate the extra.
The second look.
In there, thank you.
Second look. And I don't, I don't recall other, I don't think there were any other concerns that were outstanding. I know that the topic of the, the one-story, you know, it was something that this board discussed, and the color changes as presented is in response to that.
If I recall, we were looking pretty much at the three-story and its color closer to the facade that you'd actually built. I think the other one was just a wild rendering done that back then. But that's pretty much the finished product, is it not?
That's correct.
One of the big issues that I know that Chairman and I were, at least sounded like we're on the same page on, was the question of round-the-clock access. And I don't know if we should be discussing that as a board or asking the applicant whether they've given any consideration to limiting the access to something less than around-the-clock access.
Yeah, so we, we did discuss it, and traditionally in the business, you do afford the client's 24-hour access. You know, as the owner and the guy who has to fix stuff when it gets broken, I certainly appreciate not having people there outside of regular business hours. We would be open to, you know, opening with a 6:00 AM to midnight, hours of, not hours of operation. It would actually be manned probably nine to five, but it would have access 6:00 AM to midnight. Being the operators of the car wash, we also have more supervision. But that being said, between midnight and 6:00 AM, there isn't going to be anybody at the car wash either. So we would, we would propose that we ask for an approval with the hours not including six, I'm sorry, midnight to 6:00 AM. And then if there comes a time where we feel we need to extend the hours, then we would ask, but we would have to apply to the town for a change. I don't know if that's, I don't know exactly how it works in Aronacoit, but we would have to ask, and then we'd judge at that point. I guess you would judge or whoever the appropriate board would be at that point.
So the hours of operation could be a condition of the site plan approval? And if at some point in the future, the applicant determined that extended hours were needed to, you know, they would be able to come back to this board and make application for a revised site plan? And that would be the subject of the revision, is the hours of operation?
I think that's a very reasonable accommodation. My only question would be, is it key-card entry or?
So, so the way, the way access works, especially, you know, when it's unmanned, so nine to five, there's a person there that controls prior to after. And the way a 24-hour system would work is that if you were a customer, you would either have a key card or a code that would allow you to open and close the gate. So even at 3:00 in the morning, the idea is the general public wouldn't or shouldn't be able to have access to the area. But to your point, you know, somebody could get the code or, or get a key card. And typically, as my mom says, nothing good happens after midnight, so.
So basically, the key card or code would not work between midnight?
Correct.
The issue of signage was addressed at the last workshop. There was a double sign that you were proposing at the, the Ridge Road portion. I think we were gonna check to see if that was even allowed by code.
Well, the, would that would, that would be something that the zoning board would need to review. And so if a variance was needed based on the size of the signage, and so that's something that we would take a look at based, once this board reviews and makes its determination on the final site plan approval.
In its current state, the board, or the sign does match with code. It is allowed by code with the dimensions presented.
It was a double sign, I think, that we were questioning on a single lot.
Right, what didn't conform, it's actually gonna be two lots because the property's being subdivided. So technically, by code, we should have two separate signs on the road. I think, I can't remember which board, maybe Town Board, or maybe it was this planning board preferred that there not be two signs on the road. But, but that all being said, it's still a variance. So you are correct in that we would have to go in front of the zoning board to get this approved.
So the design of the sign is fine. So the, with having two faces, the way it's being proposed here is fine from a site plan perspective and even a zoning perspective. What maybe comes into play is the amount of square footage on a freestanding sign. So that might be where they need relief from the zoning board before they can construct the sign. But this board can review the, if you're amenable and you like the design of it, this board is looking at the design of the sign, and the zoning board would be the one, the body to contemplate any relief from the, from the size provisions that might be set forth.
Thank you. I like the top part of the design. I'm not crazy about the bottom, just to be honest with you. I mean, I think that that square part is pretty much redundant with the sign that's already on the building.
But if that saves having a second sign, I'm in favor of it in that way than having a whole second sign out there.
Right, I, is that the case? I mean, they.
So each lot.
Would allow.
Right, so each lot would be, there, there's a, the potential to, and this, for consideration by this board, would be the freestanding pylon sign would be allowed by code for each distinct lot. And also the, then, and building-faced or building-mounted signage as well. And the building-mounted signage is within the limits of the code and the, and what's permitted in terms of square footage.
And then my, to go back to my other question with the other applicant was about the LED lighting. I know that that was what was presented to us, was LED lighting on the building. Again, that's something I just read about the AMA coming out against the, the white, blue tinted.
Yeah, I think it's the color that, you know, it's the, whatever that number is.
Yeah.
Lower is better, is what I understand.
Well, they're requesting that we look at yellow lighting also because it's changing magnatory.
It'll match the roof.
Yeah.
That is, that's a recommendation for us only for the next 10 years because someone will do a study and say that it's.
Something different in 10 years, so.
Done, Michael, weigh in.
I know there's some other towns that have actually adopted codes kind of dictating what color spectrum is acceptable, like not over 3,500, whatever that word is, that, that tends to be whiter and bluer.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, we're fine with either putting it as a condition or frankly, we'll just make sure it's not white and blue.
Thank you.
Mary, questions?
No questions. I'm just glad to see something going in there. I've been looking at that lot for 10 years.
For a while.
It'll be, it'll be nice.
Thank you.
And it's a good project, thank you.
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for, I was the one that kind of was not, was not thrilled with the yellow roof. So thank you for meeting me in the middle.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Rich, Alan?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, anyone in the audience need to say, want to say, should say something? I don't do this, not at this time.
Yes.
I believe the public hearing for this matter, though, was closed at the last meeting, and I'm not, and Ashley, if you, it can be reopened.
I'm not sure if it was. Yeah, you could if you'd like to, if, if the board would like to accept public comment, they can. If the public hearing was closed, you don't have to.
Would we be on the safe, would we be on the safe side if we accepted them?
It doesn't hurt to.
Just in case it wasn't closed and we.
I'm all in favor.
The only thing I'm worried.
Sir.
More public input. My name is John DePerejo. I live at 4559.
John, would you say your name again, please?
DePerejeto.
DePerejeto.
4559 St. Paul Boulevard. The only problem I think I'm gonna have with this is the, is the, is the, what do you call it? The car wash. The car wash, the laser car wash went a flop. Okay, now what's gonna be different about this one? Is it gonna be like Delta Sonic or what? You know, I mean, that's an honest answer. Honest question.
And sir, you should address the board with your comments.
That's an honest question, I think, you know. Now, that laser car wash is on Ridge Road. It's right next to Pep Boys. It went a flop within two months, okay? And I just hate to see another vacant building up that way, you know? And I think it's a reasonable cause, you know? I mean, really. I mean, you got Delta Sonic and you got this one, but the only problem I've seen is this car wash. What's it gonna be? Is it gonna be like Delta Sonic or is it gonna be like the laser, you know?
I can, I can address that probably more unbiased than, than the owners could. I have my car washed at Royal Car Wash. And I can tell you, I can roll through there quicker. I get a cleaner car. And if I piss and moan, they'll do it again.
Well, what's, what's like an Evergreen? Like on Lake Avenue?
No, it's, no, it's not. It's, go to the one on the corner of Clover and Monroe Avenue and go through it and see.
West Ridge Road's got one.
West Ridge has got it. No, go to, go to Brighton.
By Mario's?
By Mario's.
Okay, all right. That's a long way to go for a car wash, though.
Well, they're trying to change that.
Good, good comment.
Thank you.
Where are we now?
So if there are no other, if there are no other comments from the, the public, I don't know that the public hearing was, I guess you should officially, for the record, close any public comment period.
So let's do that.
Yeah.
So the public comment is closed.
And you can entertain a motion at this point?
Yes.
The board is willing, looking to make one.
We have to do seeker.
Yep, yep. That would be the first.
I have it right here, so.
Run it to seeker.
And you all have it also? I mean, my observation of that is that there was nothing in the mitigating, you know, it's all, yeah, all nay. It's all yes, go down it.
Yep, so it looks like that the part two indicated that there would be no environmental impacts, no, no significant environmental impact.
Yeah.
So if the board agrees, there would be a motion for.
I will make a motion then on PB 10607-2 that we do a negative, unlisted action, negative declaration for seeker.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, passed, good deal. All right, so we're, pass seeker.
Time for motion.
I'll move.
We have, do we have a convoluted motion? We, do we need to do something with zoning, too?
No.
No, that's, they're on their own for that.
Correct.
Okay. Motion with one condition, I think.
I have a, maybe two. Do, do we need to indicate that we're aware or, or suggest or know they have to go to zoning for the variance in a sign? And then the other one we have is the, the signage.
And, and I think we're looking for the hours of operation as well.
Hours, six to midnight, midnight to six.
So.
I don't think we have to make it a condition that they go to zoning and get a variance for this.
We won't let them pull the building permit for the signage if it exceeds the zoning requirements and they need a variance to get the zoning or to get the signage that they would prefer.
It's, it's probably in the standard, the standard form, but you, you know, you could say subject to any other required approvals, but you don't need to call out a variance because we don't, we're not sure if one's required or not.
Okay.
On the issue of PB 1607-2, upon the matter of request by Passer Associate acting as Asian for Meredith, Dan, right, Enterprises for preliminary final site plan approval to construct a car wash facility and multi-storage, multi-self-storage buildings with the site-related improvements on premises 1365 East Ridge Road in an M1 Manufacturing District, district subject to the hours of 6:00 AM until midnight.
And I think the motion should reflect that that was offered by the applicant and the board's accepting it.
Offered by the applicant and subject to any other approvals needed through normal town business.
And just to clarify, you, you added the numeral one after M. I think it's just an M Manufacturing District.
Okay, I'll second it.
Mary, second? Okay.
He's in the city.
Do you need the motion read back?
I don't think so. So just any other comment or discussion?
So the color of the bill.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Where they proposed it.
And if it's fine, then you don't have to note anything additional.
If that, that being it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, so let me mark it down. Absent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you much.
Wonderful night.
Thanks for bringing us a good car wash. This man will be right down to see you.
Make him happy.
I went to the Western Road one the other day and it was dry out, and it is, I like the back, you don't tell a guy.
It's quick and easy.
Because I've been through Delta Sonic and Head.
It's different, you know. They do a good job, too.
I appreciate that.
I think you have one other tabled item, just to mention that it's being tabled.
Very welcome.
My agenda's old.
Somebody ran off with my minutes.
Your minutes?
My agenda.
Thanks.
Right there.
We have just a.
So this is, is continuing being tabled?
There's just the one left.
Uh, no, not this, Town Board.
This, this is the presentation.
This is what we need to say is continuing being tabled.
Right, Karen, the Culver Road application's continuing being tabled?
So that item, so the, and I, the Town Board referral upon the matter of request by Stan Tech Consulting Services acting as agent for Providence Housing Development Corp. for rezoning 4225 and 4250 Culver Road, that was just, that resolution was just adopted by Town Board last week at the Town Board meeting. And so that application has just been provided to this board as of, I believe, last Friday. So it's been a very, barely any time for, do you even take a look at the application? So as I indicated in an email on Friday, certainly it seems prudent to this board if you want to take time to review in more detail and then take it up as a discussion item at workshop and then make a decision potentially at the next planning board meeting in September?
Or consider it at the next meeting?
Consider it, correct. Yeah, thank you for.
I think that'd be a real, a real good idea. I mean, I, I went to the site and it took me well over an hour to, to walk it all and try and digest it. It's a big project down there.
Right. And this is the first step for that applicant, for the applicants. They're, you know, obviously, if the, the rezoning of the parcel is the first step, and then subsequent to that would, if they, if they were to get past that step, would be to come to this board for site plan review. And that's not, they're not there yet. So there's no site plan yet at this point.
So we don't do anything with it? We mentioned, we, we talked about it and that's it?
Um, you, you'd be making the referral to the, to the Town Board for their consideration as they contemplate the, the application for the rezone?
But we're not doing that tonight, are we?
No.
No.
The next meeting, it sounds like.
Do you need a motion for us to table this, or?
Not necessarily. You can, though. You can make a motion and say that you're gonna consider it at the, the next meeting. There's no public hearing that's been opened that you're having to continue. So it's just really the timing of the application that, you know, you didn't get the materials with sufficient time in order to consider it.
There's not even a planning board number for it, so.
Yeah, we can just note that.
Okay, so noted. Is there any other news before, any other news before us?
Other minutes to adopt or anything else administrative?
I don't know if there were minutes in the packet.
Okay.
I apologize, unfortunately.
Is there any other news before, any other news before us?
Are there minutes to adopt or anything else administrative?
I don't know if there were minutes in the packet.
Okay.
I apologize, Mich, unfortunately, just so, our, Michelle went home ill today, and so Donna was very kind to be able to jump in and provide the role of secretary. Unfortunately, I don't know that there are minutes to review.
There are minutes, but I would recommend that we wait, given the changing nature of the board and the numbers of people, and we do it the next time with a larger group.
Makes sense.
There's only two of us here, three of us here right now that would be in beyond those minutes.
Thank you, Rich.
So I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, yes to go.
Third.
Thanks for bearing, thanks for bearing with me.
Nice job.
Good job, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
You're a dutiful servant.